I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go down to school committee business, I do want to wish the girls varsity basketball team very much success in tonight's game. I know it started at seven, so hopefully they're winning.
Go Royals.
Yes, I hope they do a great job, but they've already made us proud by just getting to this point, so good for them. So tonight's meeting, last week's meeting, we did ask the superintendent and the administrators to go back with a budget of three and a half percent versus the original budget of 2.03 percent. So the superintendent and the administration has given the school committee a list of items that they would like to see restored on the budget, and at this point in time, we will have open discussion as to what we can do about getting the budget up to three and a half percent as far as, as long as we're all in agreement. Do we want to go through the prioritization? Should I, well, should I list out? And then we can open discussion, just so the public is aware of what you have recommended to be restored? Okay. This is in priority order, and there are seven items. So priority one would be to restore a second grade teacher at Pembroke. Priority two would be to restore .8.
Do you want to read, if you could, the amount and the reasoning behind it?
Sure. The amount for the restoral of a grade two teacher is $53,451. The rationale would be high priority to keep class size below 22. Priority two, restore .8 content teacher at the middle school at a cost of $45,138. This would enable the seventh grade team to have six sections in core subjects rather than five. Third priority to restore the in-school suspension monitor at $21,593. This would increase support for students involved in disciplinary situations, and it provides a short-term option to avoid external suspensions. Four would be to restore the middle high school network technician to full-time at a cost of $32,148. This would provide technical assistance and support to staff regarding their hardware issues and keeps the devices in working order. The position is more critical as devices are encouraged to be used by staff and students. Fifth would be to restore the district special education secretary at a cost of $13,299. This would increase compliance and improve customer satisfaction to parents with special education students. Six, to restore .6 content teachers at the middle school at a cost of $35,267. This would allow the eighth grade team to have six sections in most core subjects. Class sizes on average would be 21 students per section and allows for one smaller section for students that need the small group content instruction. Seven would be to restore the assistant principal at the middle high school to full-time and hire a part-time athletic director at a class of $37,144. The assistant principal at the high school would be available to handle full-time administrative responsibilities for discipline, supervision, and evaluation, and communicating with staff, students, and families. The athletic director would be part-time and likely partnered with the employee in the in-school suspension monitor position.
Thank you.
Sure.
So it would only, so there's two choices if you're going to try to hit your $203,525 point. And that is items one through six, which does not have the AD AP, or items one through five and the AD AP and does not restore the .6 content teachers at the middle school. Would it be helpful if we just briefly talked about why, what we didn't choose and why we didn't choose it? Would that be helpful to you? Okay, so the strategy that we used is we literally, because we spent time prioritizing them the first time, right? So we went right up the list and revisited this again. And honestly, you may, we may need to revisit again after we find out exactly what we're getting from the finance and advisory board, right? So this, what we're talking about is what we would do if we got the full three and a half percent. But in the event that we don't, which I guess we always have to plan for, right? Then we need to go back again and agree, you know, is there anything further that we would need to tweak? But this is generally where we went. So the last position that we, we said the first position we would restore would be the second grade teacher. And when Margaret and all of us looked at the enrollments, and you know, we, in the district for years, we've been trying to keep K through to 22 or below, if we can, right? Because there's a lot of expectations, you know, from the state, a lot of expectations from the district. And frankly, those are where those foundational skills are really starting to solidify. So we want to, if we can, the choice would be to maintain the class size in that range. Knowing the students that we're talking about, we felt that that was something that we felt would be our highest priority to return. We did not choose to put the fourth grade teaching position in, not because we wouldn't like to see that class size lowered, but again, because we felt that some of the things, you know, had a little higher priority. And the number we were talking about is still 23, 24 students. Of course, that assumes that nobody moves in. It does assume that, but generally, kids, students could move out too, right? There's some volatility to the numbers. But we felt that, again, we looked at those grades and said, we really would like to keep it below 25. And so we're in that range even with reducing a section. So that's why we, at this stage, made the decision to not suggest that position, even though we know it creates a bubble. But it's a, it's just a bubble for a couple of years. Whereas if we created the bubble at the second grade, then it's a bubble for a lot longer, so. Not that we, go ahead.
Can I just say, I mean, just the idea of not having any teachers, of cutting any teachers is extremely painful. And, you know, I remember fourth grade, when my, I have three children, and I remember them going through it. It's very intense, intense, I mean, the volume of curriculum that these children are expected to comprehend and to take and to learn and to take in. It's just, it's a, there's a lot of homework. I just, I mean, there's a lot of, it's not just homework, it's a lot of learning.
That's very true.
It's, you know, I mean, third grade is important, fifth grade is important.
It's gone down, you know, it's definitely pushed down.
Fourth grade was just so intense.
Yes. Well, remember, fourth grade was the, sort of the year of the MCAS, and it was in the grade spans as opposed to individual grades. And frankly, the Massachusetts standards have definitely, you know, made their way in a more rigorous level, you know, down lower. We, you know, we're reading articles on, you know, first grade, kindergarten's the new first grade, and, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of expectation. So we agree with you, Pam?
I'm sure you can, you know, testify and confirm that it does a lot to teach in fourth grade. I'm not saying, I'm just making the observation.
No, it's, believe me, we agree with you 100%.
It pains me to have, to see that higher class size in fourth grade.
Yes, and as I said, it's 23, 24. So it's, you know, right now, that's.
I do think it's manageable.
At this point, it might be, but it, again, it depends, you know. Again, we're just looking at the task we were given, and I just want you to understand the rationale. We might not all agree on that, and that's really, that's really okay. Then the district secretary, we actually moved some things up above that, but we kept that on the list. The content teachers for the small groups at GMHS. So when we really went and looked at it, the current practice for years has been that there's very small group of students who benefits from getting their content in a smaller group. These don't always tend to be children who are like, you know, language-based. They already get a small group experience, but these are students with some school phobia, you know, some high anxiety. That it's just, even if you were to put them in a smaller section of a class, they might still be anxious. So this, this is the way, you know, we've done it in the past. So on the student's IEP, no student will not, if it says small group instruction, no student will not get that service. I want to make that very, very clear. Last year, we happened to have a couple of places where we had a .2 content teacher. So we thought that would be the ideal, would be if we could do that. When we looked at the data to go back in and really say, well, would we put that in? Peter actually looked at the sections, and in many cases, there was one student or two students. I think the most we had in any one section was five, four or five. I'm talking about the content, the small group instruction, yeah. And we had two teachers in that class. So are we on the same page? Yeah, okay. So what it means is that the students will still get their, like, let's say it's Algebra I. They'll still get their Algebra I, right? And in some cases, we have special education teachers who are dual-certified. So the, every effort will be made, as we were doing before we went to this content model this year only. We actually did have teachers who had the content certification that also had a special education certification working with that small group. So in a tough budget year like we're in now, and we're making some tough choices, we felt that it was to have two teachers working in a class with one to two students, or one to three stu, two teachers with two or three students, was a luxury we couldn't continue to afford. We needed to redirect those teachers to different places. So some of the .2s or 4s you're seeing are the result of that. So again, students will get those small group experiences, but they'll do it like we've done before, which is with the special education teacher and coordination with the content teachers so that the students get the curriculum. And I just want to reassure you that, you know, all of our students who have been in those small group opportunities have passed, graduated with an MCAS diploma, so it's not that the model we were using before didn't work. We just had the ability to try this model this year, and I don't, we don't believe we have the resources to continue with the model we've got now. We're going to go back to one teacher, it's on the C grid in the student's IEP, which means it has to be delivered by a special ed teacher. Because the other option was we could have reduced the special education staff and kept the sections of the content. But if it's on the student's IEP in grid C, it must have a special education component as well. So it really would force us to have both teachers. And as I pointed out, the numbers just wouldn't warrant that. So that's why that position did not, did not make it back on the list. The night custodian at the middle high school definitely pains us. We're concerned about that, but we're equally as concerned about not being able to have the maintenance person in the budget anywhere at the center of school. So, you know, I guess we're going to, we're going to try to rearrange the workload. Hopefully, because we've done some upgrading at the middle high school, it's not, sometimes it's easier to maintain a place that's in good shape as opposed to try to maintain a place where there's a lot of issues with not only the systems, but just, just the look and feel of the facility. So we did not, we did not opt to put that back in. And I think we sort of heard from the committee and heard from the public that, you know, they felt a strong priority, if we could, that the teachers were, you know. So we tried to respond to that. We did not bring the paraprofessional back as, for the, because we do believe that the rationale is sufficient. And you know what? I skipped a whole bunch of things, didn't I? Let's back up here for a minute. I skipped a whole page. So let's go back, just, so fourth grade teacher, we, I talked about. Assistant principal, athletic director, we did bring that back largely, and again, you can see it, it's back, but it's near the bottom of the restoration list, not because we don't think it's important. But again, we felt that one of the criteria we used when we determined what went on the list in the first place was could we figure out a different way to do something and still maintain the service? Plus, we were also looking across the board at, you know, various categories. So I think the reason the in-school suspension person came up higher on the list than they are listed in this book is because we are anticipating that, for two reasons, we're anticipating that the person that's in the ISS position right now has been our athletic director and has been an athletic director in other places, that perhaps we could use him as a game administrator and to, you know, kind of fill in or back up Guy Prescott, who's the assistant principal if need be. And we're looking for the opportunity also to have this new suspension laws. And we just went through that CPR, I told you, and a lot of us got asked questions about what is the district doing to ensure that instruction can continue, that students aren't being suspended out of school. Now, you actually could argue that the AP, you know, could fill in for that. But if you, if we're taking a half of their, giving them less time to do their administrative responsibilities, some of which is discipline, on top of the AD responsibility, we felt like something was going to give, something was going to be stressful, and so we decided that we wanted to restore the ISS as a way to protect and preserve some of the time that Guy Prescott would be using to do administrative tasks other than discipline. So that, that was the rationale for that. I'm trying to think of what other thing we didn't put back on. I talked about the custodian.
Library.
Oh, yes, okay. So now we're going to weigh up the list. So we're on the first page, no, second page. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't put the library assistant back, and we do, it was, it was, that was a painful discussion. But I think what we, again, went back to the criteria of, is there another way to do the service? So contractual obligations was, was one of our drivers, right? So we didn't reduce any specials, you saw that, we didn't reduce, and it's because the library is a special for the elementary students. So the reason we, I think it was a .4, we reduced the full-time library assistant to .4 was we still need 1.6 in order to cover contractual obligations. So every, every teacher will still get their prep time, every student, every class will still get time with the librarian during their special. So that shouldn't be a change in service. It would mean that time that the librarian has to work in the library when the students aren't necessarily, the teaching responsibility would definitely be the casualty of this cut. So we felt that this would be an opportunity, perhaps, for some parent volunteers who could come in and re-shelf books or do a number of, do a number of things along that line. That's why it didn't come back, not because we didn't think it was important. We, it doesn't change services for children in terms of what their primary role is. It just, it does mean that there will definitely be an impact because there won't necessarily be somebody in that library, you know. But I was there today for Dr. Seuss, Dr. Seuss's birthday, which was so much fun. And, you know, when the children are busy in class, which is what they're doing most of the time, the only students that were in the library media center at that time were the kids who were supposed to be in there because they had a special. There isn't a lot of time where the children can kind of wander in and out of the library because they're otherwise engaged unless their teacher works something out with the librarian, which could happen. But generally speaking, the time with the children is protected in this, in this decision. Other than that, you know, the first five, I think, are pretty low impact, right? The first five are pretty low impact, so we didn't, you know, we can certainly answer any questions about them, but the ones that I talked about are the ones that affect people, right?
It appears that we are going, if we generally assume this template is something supportable, that we're going to have to choose between number six and seven to get the total amount of the restoration to around $200,000.
Right. So what Joan has done is, for right now, just in the draft budget, to get to your 3.5, she picked the .6 and put it in because it gets closer to your number, honestly.
Is there, I mean, and I, this is really hard, I mean, if that's, this is the task, which it isn't necessarily, but this is a really difficult decision, so.
This is your mission if you choose to accept it then.
Right.
I just, I'm mission impossible, the other day.
Thank you, thank you, yes. An excellent show, an excellent show.
Kind of lighten the mood.
I mean, what if you did, instead of, say, restoring .8 content teachers at the seventh grade and .6 at the eighth grade, what if you did .3 at the eighth grade and .4 at the seventh grade to get the money?
I don't know if it would accomplish what they're trying to do, though.
So are you trying to find more money, Pam?
Well, she was trying to condense.
She's trying to reduce the points in.
Because she wants to get what in? What, is there something you want to add?
Well, right now, this totals a restoration of $238,040. We have to get that down, so we have to take something out of this.
You're saying one through seven?
Right.
The, right.
So that's why we would do all ones to seven.
I was wondering, what do you think, and I'm asking you, the educational impact would be of taking out .4 content teachers at the seventh grade and .3 at the eighth grade?
Okay, well, let's ask Peter.
Which would also pain me greatly, however, we need to find something.
But I think it wouldn't allow to have the six sections, though.
It won't allow.
It wouldn't allow to have the six sections.
In some class, subject.
Okay.
Peter, could you, do you know what she's asking?
I'm really confused. We have seven items.
So the proposed restoration is .8, correct?
Yes.
That represents, it has to be in, it has to be .8 at a time.
Okay.
You can't, you can't cut it in half.
Because .8 represents the, a class in each core area. Okay.
So it has to be units of .8. Because I couldn't have five social studies classes and six math classes.
Right, or three English classes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to you, Pam?
It does, yes, yeah, thank you, okay.
No, I just have a question regarding number nine and number 12.
Number nine and number 12.
So nine is to reduce .8 content teachers at the middle high school. 12 is to eliminate 1.6 middle school content teachers.
So the .8 are the small group teachers. And as Carol said, you have a special ed teacher and a content teacher in the room with two or three kids. So the 1.6 represents one class in each core area in the seventh grade and in the eighth grade. So .8, .8, and .6.
So if you're asking, I wonder maybe what's confusing you, Barbie, too, is, so why wouldn't we have just done number two, put 1.6 content teachers?
Well, no, I understand your rationale.
You understand, so, yeah, so we prioritize the seventh grade, and then we said, if we can, we want to do the eighth grade, but the seventh grade is, in our opinion, more meaty.
Okay.
Right, you mean coming up next year?
Yeah, coming up next year. So the, and Peter, do you?
If we look at, if we look at the reading data with that class, there's some challenges there, and we feel that that sixth class could really help us.
And when we looked at the numbers for eighth grade, right, because that's, we did look at that, like, Peter pulled up the, what are the current, the current actual class size numbers?
Right.
And the highest one was, the highest section was, was, because it was grouped for math. So it was the more capable students, which was 25.
Yeah, so we looked at the seventh grade class, thinking they're going to go to the eighth, because the worry is, it's not a simple divide by five or six, because starting in the seventh grade, we group in math. So we have to make decisions, you know, where that cutoff will be. So the highest math class in the seventh grade is 25. And there's a math class there low of 12. So we are really worried if you reduce, you know, it looks on paper that, you know, if you go to five classes, you're only talking about three kids. But it's not three kids, like evenly distributed. So where we're really worried, like, oh, if there's a class of 28, that three kids makes it 31. So we don't think that will happen because, unless somebody moves up a level or down a level from this year, which there isn't a lot of that, it can happen, the highest class is 25. So we're pretty confident with that number and that we can, we can handle that.
But it's why it came back on the list.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's pretty important.
Yeah, me too.
Me too. Especially that subject.
Yeah.
I know, Peter, we did talk about the ISS monitor in the past. If we could just get a little more information from you in terms of the current disciplinary, you know, the amount that you have, I know we're not going to hold you to the exact numbers, but, you know, on a, on a daily basis, how many kids would be in the ISS?
Some days, none. So.
That's good to hear.
Yep, and why that position is important, it's good to have that person on call all the time. That person never sits in that room by themselves.
Yeah, he seems to go everywhere when you need him to.
He's used, he's the first substitute we use if there isn't anybody in suspension. However, some, let's say there's a day, let's say today he was subbing in a class and a discipline issue came about, and we wanted to have a place for this individual to go for a couple periods. It wouldn't be a suspension. It's an alternative to suspension, which the new law tells us that's the first thing that we have to do. So the principal is supposed to look for other ways besides suspension, suspension or last resort. So one of those days is to kind of, you know, and one of those ways is to kind of move, remove a kid from class for a little while, put him in that area under supervision, and then he can return or, you know, have a, you know, a couple periods rather than a full day. Wouldn't be able to do that if we lost that position. That's one of the reasons why we need it.
So basically, if that position was gone and a child had some discipline issues, they would be in a room?
Well, we would have to make it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have anything in between. We would have to either do something and send them back to class or send them home.
But you would make another policy, or you'd make something in place of what you wouldn't have?
What do you say?
No, we would use.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to make up another policy. You would have to.
Well, would he basically be going to the assistant principal's office instead of?
I'm just saying, something would have to take its place. They'd have to figure something out.
Yeah, we would have to use another choice. I don't, I don't, you know, we always think for, we're always thinking about alternatives. I mean, that's what we want to do as a last resort. We'll never stop thinking about that. But if you ask me right now, because I haven't had a chance, it would be, you know, what's on each side of bringing a kid, taking a kid out for a couple periods? And one of those, one of the sides is he has to go home, or she. And on the other end of that is.
But what does the data support, meaning, and I, and I don't know if you have this at the top of your head, and I know Barbie had asked the question, but how often are you using this person, say, for a week? In a week, how often do you use this person?
Other than for ISS, you say?
Right, I guess I.
No, I'm saying, I mean, this is saying right here strictly for ISS. It says restore the ISS monitor, so I want to know how often you use this person as ISS?
I think it would be best if I brought you that information, because I really don't, it's a difficult question because some weeks are worse than other weeks.
When the full moon happens?
But I think it's really important to understand that even though that position says ISS, it's really not. It's really substitute ISS.
You know, but we do have that separate substitution line.
I don't, I believe there isn't anybody scheduled to be suspended tomorrow. So if the first teacher that calls in, Katie would not get us up because we're using that person. So if if the first teacher that calls in, Katie would not get us up because we're using that person. That person is the first sub out of the box.
Okay, because he's already scheduled to be there.
Yeah, and when we created the positions a while ago, we took money from the long-term sub account, not actually from the sub account, and money from the Saturday detention, uh, line in the budget, put those two together and came up with that.
So if this person isn't being used as an ISS that day and isn't being used as a sub that day.
He is being used, there's almost always at least one person out. It's very rare, and and in the case that there isn't, we usually use them to cover classes for teachers to go to special ed meetings, um, he goes into the cafeteria and, uh, helps monitor lunch.
Well, the other thing that sort of comes to my mind in terms of, you know, we want what's best for all kids and sometimes we might think, well, he's got, this person has one child that he's, but actually, if there's a discipline problem in a class, it's affecting every child in that class. So to be able to bring a discipline issue, to remove it, does help the quality of learning for the rest of the kids too, so, I mean.
Food for thought.
Yeah, I do agree with that, but I also wanna go back to what the superintendent said where she said, if there is an alternative to that.
Yeah.
I I I, one more thing, that that person also monitors detention at the end of the school day. So we get a tremendous bang for that buck. That person really is working from seven thirty to three o'clock every day for for that salary.
Peter, does, um, so when when he, when a student goes to to him, is it, is it just like, sit down and be quiet and do your work, or is there an opportunity for him to work with the child, like to get a plan for how you're gonna get yourself back in class?
Collaborative problems.
Yeah, I, because I, I was under the impression that it was kind of like a planning room, kinda where.
There is a, that, um, that portion takes place, but it takes place with the individual's guidance council. So the guidance council is supposed to meet with with the student during the day. There's a a reflection, um, that they're supposed to write and, um, so that person doesn't really do that, it's more of a of a monitor.
But it, but while the child is there, are they expecting?
Yeah, I mean, if you know Bill Adams, he's, he's always, you know, he helps kids with their work.
Yeah.
And stuff like that.
Yeah, I, um, me, personally, I, this would be lower on the list for me. I I just, uh, for me, I just think there is, and there are alternatives. Uh, and I do agree that the money is, is a small amount of money for the work that he does. Um, but that's just my personal take on that particular position. Does anybody else wanna weigh in on that?
I agree with you on that, I just, I just think there are other alternatives that could be explored. And and if it's something that could be restored within the the two options, you know, then I would agree to that. But I think it should go lower.
Okay.
On the list.
Well, and so, number six and seven, explain how those work again, because.
Explain how they work.
Um.
You mean in terms of toward the getting to the three and a half percent?
Right.
Two, three, one or?
Yeah.
One or the other.
If you go, if if we put all seven, it would be in excess of three and a half percent. So to to sort of get within that ballpark, you, it's either of those choices. So it's, it was all one through five, but it was one through five and seven.
Or one through five and six, it's not both. Well, I would like to see number six moved up.
Yes.
Considering, considering, you know, we are talking about teachers who directly work with the kids. And we have our grade two teacher, the point eight for seventh grade, so I feel like this should be with that.
Agreed. I would move six to below number two. And then move it down from there.
And then three to six?
Yeah, swap the positions, mm-hmm. Or even swap, I would even swap, well, I guess you can't because it's a different money amount, but, you know, possibly swapping, um, moving three to five and moving five down to six.
Yeah, five, uh, since Suzanne brought that up, five, um, I have a, I have a difficult time with this even being on here. Uh, so I'd like some more information on that, I understand.
The district secretary.
I understand the special education, um, secretary does have to ensure compliance. I I understand the job, um, description, but I'd like to know a little bit more as to why it was ahead of the other things that were on the list that the superintendent just went over.
Do you wanna talk to that Donna?
Sure, uh, with regard, they do a lot of work, um, providing assistance to the coordinators who have an extensive amount of, um, duties and responsibilities. So they coordinate all of the meetings, which, um, it's really hundreds of meetings every year in each of the schools for special education. They take care of all of the paperwork, they ensure that all the EPs, all of the, um, evaluations, any of the progress notes, the report cards, all of that paperwork is copied and sent out and mailed out in an appropriate format. We have very tight timelines, we can get information, you need to have a turnaround as quickly as five days in order to stay in compliance. And the compliance piece is what's significant to ensuring and maintaining that the, um, students are staying in district as well, because those are the pieces that if you go to hearing, you lose, um, the case. Also, um, at Once Upon a Time, apparently, there were two full-time secretaries. And now we're down to two part-time, with this proposal being a single part-time person, which is truly an impossible task. I know we've talked about people providing some assistance here and there when they can, but the learning curve is significant for clearly understanding how to work the database system, um, how to access the forms and files, what is necessary in order to send things out to parents, contacting parents, scheduling meetings, rescheduling meetings, working with the teachers, collecting all of the different documentation and input that's required. It's just a significant amount of paper pushing, projects, mailings, those types of pieces. So it's really a huge compliance concern.
Okay, so if that, um, was not restored, who would, who would pick up those duties? Would it be any, any administrative, um, individual amongst the the schools? Or do they have to be, um, trained in particular like special education, uh, rules?
So like coordinators would not possibly fit that into their schedule? They're already working more than full days now, you know, they're there seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning and then they're there till five or five thirty at night, sometimes beyond that. Um, we've done a lot, we've been doing a lot of work on weekends and in the evenings, particularly with this compliance issue that we have, the CPR review that's been going on. Um, they could not pick up any of this. So the other piece is talking about people who are working already, whether it's a guidance secretary, a middle school secretary, they have significant responsibilities and job loads themselves. So it would be when they could fit something in, and again, we have significant timelines. But even just the learning curve piece would be very difficult, you know, fitting that piece in, training them on the different software applications that we have, as well as really understanding the significant number of forms that need to be generated and sent out and what the timelines are.
Okay, right, cause I was just gonna say, under the impact in the budget book, it does indicate that, um, this secret, this particular position would have to be covered from other secretaries, club typists, that's what would happen. Amongst, okay.
So there has to be some, some time perhaps, uh, for Janine Dion, Dion, Dion and then perhaps for Cheryl.
So other things wouldn't be getting done.
Right.
You know, so then you have to start prioritizing what is it we're going to do if we're truly going to be in compliance with the types of things that is absolutely necessary for my department. And what things that are in Margaret's office or in Peter's office are not going to get done and going to be dropped to the wayside. So then, you know, maybe you'll have issues there. It it really depends because there's not sufficient staff to cover all of the work that needs to be generated.
Well, with all due respect with it, for such a small number, it was still on the original cuts. So I'm looking at it as, I'm I'm still not convinced that it's not something that we could forego at this point. Um, I'm, when I looked at it, I I certainly was looking at the numbers at first. Um, and after a discussion with the superintendent this afternoon, I shifted the way I was looking at things, but I really looked at that and then the ISS individual and saw a teacher position. But I'm more, um, inclined to say that the ISS to me is, is more important than earlier today. Because I do think for the amount of money that we're paying that individual, we are getting the service. And as Cheryl mentioned, it really is about the, all the kids. And I do think when kids, you know, have some discipline issues, that they should be able to be, um, handled appropriately, so. Uh, does anyone have any questions about that, the special education?
So I would just say, looking at it long-term wise as well, the other consideration is that if you're not getting these things done and you're not getting them out the door when they need to get out the door and you do indeed, maybe lose that hearing on the technicalities, because those are just the realities of life, you need to sort of look at the costs of, what's an out-of-district placement gonna cost? What's a transportation going to cost and all of those pieces? And it's significantly more than thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah. How many special ed students are in the school?
How many?
In in the middle to high school, is that what you cover?
Both.
No, we do the whole district.
There's one, there's one at the elementary.
No, 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 how many student, how many, how many?
Between the two half-time secretaries?
Yeah.
So they work for one coordinator at each school?
Yes, right, so presently, they each have a part-time person that Once Upon a Time was a full-time person. And we have the pre-K as well, so it's pre-K through age twenty.
There's two hundred and fifty students, that's what you're asking.
That, two hundred and fifty students and how many are in special ed?
No, two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty are special ed, yeah.
Between the, the two schools.
Yeah.
Around fifteen percent?
So you're talking, if you average.
No, actually, actually, go ahead Donna.
Okay.
You average about, say, a hundred and twenty-five students at each building.
Well.
You're talking, you know, times the number of meetings you need to have, times PIPs, the quarterly reports, the evaluations, the, uh, it's just pretty considerable.
The question that I do have, now that you have brought all this time-sensitive things up and the amount of money that this individual can save the district out of placement, is why are we paying them thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars? Part-time. That's a lot of responsibility, it sounds like. I mean, to, you know, for me, I'm just saying that.
I'm sure they wouldn't disagree with you, neither would.
I'm sure they wouldn't disagree.
If a, if a, but to me, if a child goes out of, out of district and it's gonna be because that thirteen thousand, two ninety-nine part-time employee didn't get something done, I don't know. I I would think that that amount would be more.
I I had the same thought. Well, we're working on that with the negotiating.
Yeah, that's right.
So, so it sounds like if you're looking at that. Well, just a minute Wes, I don't know where they're putting it at this point.
Yeah.
You know, my only concern is moving, restoring that point six along with restoring the point eight content teachers. Where everything else falls, those are the things that, those are my priorities right there.
That's the things you prioritize.
And then the others are just sort of moving.
Yeah, which, so the top three.
I would, yeah, I'd like to move the restored a six to being one of those top three, yes, one, two, and six being the top priorities.
Well, that does bring us then to the restoral of the middle high school network tech.
Mm-hmm.
Full-time, if that's a good opportunity to bring this forward.
Sure. Should we talk about that?
Yeah, I'd like to know a little bit more from you Wes, what this, cause at the last meeting we talked about, you would be able to pick up the duties that this would.
It would be tough, but it could be done. You're talking about reducing your amount of time being spent doing other, other things like anything else, you're you're cutting, you're what you're cutting. But, you know, the 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 high school will suffer a little bit with timeliness of getting things done. Um, if we had a, anything more stuff onto our plate there, like a one-to-one situation, that, that would be very difficult to to absorb, but it is what it is.
How is the internship working with the, with the students?
It's, it's, it's slow, it's getting there, but it's, it's gonna take some time to develop that program.
How many kids are in that program right now?
For now, it's three.
Three?
Three or four, yeah.
That work one period a day.
Why do we? One period, right. So the three of them work together?
No.
No, not necessarily.
They work at, they work, usually work at different, they usually.
Okay, so that then enables, so three kids, okay.
Why aren't there more kids in that program?
That's what we had.
Interest.
That's interest, that's the interest.
I think it will, I think it will build and grow, but it's a new program.
Yeah.
Well, it's a great opportunity for.
Today I know.
Yeah, for kids to go into that field.
That's one of the, that's one of the, just at something, not recently, and they were talking about the, the fastest-growing businesses and industries and absolutely, technology is bursting with opportunities. So definitely, programming and and computer technology is really gonna take off, so yeah, those kids are gonna have an advantage.
So Peter, what do you, in terms of the, um, the network technician, what do you see occurring?
I think Wes is is being nice, because if he did that job, that's the only job he would do in the district. That person works all day long, every minute, fixing things. And we, we, we really need to go to a one-to-one initiative and that's gonna double that work. I don't see how.
Well, I certainly did prioritize, when I thought of this, I I would prioritize this particular position higher if the one-to-one was was officially occurring in in the fall, that I do agree with you there. Um, so you're saying that the individual is just, it's, it's, would be way too much for Wes to recover the time?
I I ju, I have to, I I know that he has got a ton of things on his plate already and I know what that guy does right now and that, that's all he does all day long, is support teach, and he's supporting instruction, is what he's doing for the most part.
Explain that to me better?
That means something's not going on right in the classroom, the.
So like the monitor isn't working?
The monitor isn't working, the Apple TV isn't working, this, and instruction stops.
Teacher could be in in the middle of a lesson and it's like.
And there'll be nobody, and and he could be, he could be over dealing with a, with a, uh, a problem at at Pembroke. And now they've got, something's going wrong in the high school and five teachers can't do what they planned.
So I wonder with the size of our district, how, like, are we at, pretty much at the same in terms of how many people we have supporting the classrooms? Or do you feel like we would, we're already like below with that?
We, we have.
Because to me, if that's the case, if if I'm a teacher and I, and something happens and I call and and that individual's, you know, in another classroom fixing that, so my instruction time has to, what I planned for instruction has to totally be rearranged.
We have one less person in the middle high school supporting technology than we, we had.
Okay. We had Mary, we used to have Mary Ellen.
Three years, we had two PIs, correct?
Right. Was she part-time or was she full-time?
She was part-time, well, she, she, she used to be full-time, but then when she retired, remember, she was at work.
Right, and then the last couple of years, yes.
Yeah, but she did a lot of work as a teacher.
What does Liz do, she just teaches technology? She can't be used for troubleshooting?
She's not, she's not a technician. She's a full-time teacher, she's a full-time teacher.
Full-time teacher, okay.
So, yeah.
It's a totally different skill set.
Not, right.
Is, is the amount of, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of lump it all into sort of tech support, cause that's kinda what it sounds like. Is that, we have that many tech support issues that it's a full-time job of tech support issues?
Yeah.
Is that expected from a, from a technology perspective? In a classroom setting, yes.
Yeah, I would agree.
It's just more, there's more unit, more different devices that they're using to construct with. You would say like in an office where they have one computer on the desktop and even that, you know, tech support is usually one tech support for thirty units, so.
It it has become more, the shift of that position has, has changed a little bit and it's become more network-related as we've expanded our network and less PC repair as, because we bought, you know, the teachers' new PCs and things. So, I mean, the the guy before, uh, the person that's there. So, I mean, the the guy before, uh, the person that's there now, used to be dealing with broken PCs all day long because, you know, they were, we were picking them up, we were taking from other school districts what they were getting rid of.
Right, what was already obsolete almost.
Yeah, and 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 a company that donated a lot of stuff for us.
Sure, you used to have a whole bunch of those in your room.
So then when we added the wireless network and expanded our other network, it really kind of shifted what was going on there. And then we we're adding new stuff now too with the Apple TVs and we're trying to, you know, maintain that and and the phone system is is network related now, so it's really growing.
Well, I just know towards the end of the old Pembroke days, the old building, when technology was blossoming and smart boards were coming to classrooms and we were getting some laptops, some, you know, I mean, Barry.
Very mixed bag of things.
Barry Belanger was running around like a one armed paper hanger, trying to, you know, a- and that was just blossoming technol- not full swing, you know.
It really hasn't changed yet, now I I I take up, where they get stuck, I come in and give them a hand. So now they have somebody they can fall back on and they get like when Barry gets or or Kyle gets inundated, I can come over and give him a hand. That would go away and that would make things more difficult.
Well, and it.
There's no question about it.
When a teacher is in the middle of a lesson and all of a sudden, you know, what's on the smart board disappears, it is very disruptive and I mean, it is what technology is, but um so in terms of having somebody there who can help you almost on a moment's notice.
Wow, so that's the case, is it almost on a moment's notice, it sounds like it might not be.
Not always, but it would be even longer.
Yeah.
I don't know, it it's it's hard.
Right.
Because the other people that are involved in technology are actually teaching. Like Mary Ann Farrell is, she's actually got a full caseload in the business teachers.
Is there ever a time that they run into her office and or her classroom and say, hey, can you come and get me?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, Mary, Mary Ann, and Mary Ann on her part time, she'll run around and help people. I mean, we, the tech staff here in the district is is, you know, they they don't sit around and do nothing. They're they're always accessible and and helping and Barry's amazing in terms of, you know, he'll just step in and do whatever you need him to do. Um, but the goal is to keep everything up and running and now, of course, we have all this new technology. So we want to be sure that we gave the teachers at the middle high school the la- the capacity to do their iPads and their laptops too. So we have to make sure, we never had those before either, so I think that's why it ended up being a higher priority.
Okay, so do we, uh, does the committee want to keep that as number four or what are your thoughts on that?
But does it, do we need to sort of create a new priority list if we don't?
No, because these are all in the budget, except including this point six content teachers.
Right.
Oh, I think we're we're feeling like when we meet with the finance committee on Wednesday and when they give us the, you know,
Right. The real deal.
The three and a half percent, that no, so right, then we'll just be able to then say, so this discussion, um, I think will help.
Yeah. I guess I'm 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 anticipating not no, a number that is not gonna be three and a half percent or two point oh three percent.
After.
It's sort of a moving target and we're trying to set priority numbers on a moving target and we certainly can, I'm not saying we shouldn't.
Yeah.
It's it's a little.
I I think I heard some agreement that that in the top three.
Yes.
Did I hear that correctly?
Well, one, two and six.
One, two and six, yeah.
Six.
Yep.
Correct, so if, I mean, we could start there and then when we start getting down to these others, you know, if we get more money, then obviously we we can.
How much is that, Pam, I'm I'm sure you probably already did the math.
What do you want to know, I got it all in.
Yeah, one, two and six. One, two and six.
What do you mean, one, two and six?
Um, so priority one, two, and then priority six, the amounts together.
Fifty three, forty five and thirty five.
One, oh, Michael has it, one thirty four?
Well, I mean.
Which would be.
Well, you still have more to add then.
One, two and six.
If you just did that, the one, two and six.
That's, I got, I just give you a second here.
Well, does somebody want to speak to the significance of number seven?
Yes, sure.
Why don't you begin with that?
Do you want me to?
One, one, two and six gets you up to one forty three, nine, seventy eight.
One forty three, you.
What is it?
Three, nine, seventy eight?
One forty three, nine, seventy eight. That's the grade two, one point six content and point eight small group.
No, no, you got the wrong one.
Nope.
I grabbed something wrong?
Uh, grade two teacher.
One thirty three, nine, fifty. Yes.
Point eight content teacher.
And then.
And then point six.
I'm sorry, I I got the number, I just got those points wrong, that's all.
That's okay.
It's point eight and a point six, you're right.
So what is that, what is, so what is, is that the right number?
Yeah, it should be one forty three, nine, seventy.
Silly me.
One forty three, nine, seventy eight.
One three three, eight, five, six. No, one three three, eight, five, six.
One three three, eight, five, six for one, two.
Well, we know we're trying to eliminate approximately thirty six thousand dollars in this, right?
Well, so you had to, you were trying to cut two oh three and you, so you, the difference two oh three to one thirty three, how much more do you have to go, Michael, since you have a calculator?
Two oh three to one thirty three?
Uh, seventy.
Seventy K, so seventy K. You get sort of two more things.
Well, rather than adding all up, I'm just trying to look at.
Yes, okay.
How do we get to thirty six thousand dollars here? So.
So let's talk about item seven.
Yeah.
Priority seven.
Priority seven, Peter.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
I think it's very important to understand that that is one building with two separate schools in them that operate on two separate philosophies. And the way we handle um our staffs and the kids and the discipline are very different. And the middle school also is a school that we've had a lot of turnover with administration over the past six years. And we worked very hard over the past three years to really bring it back to a true middle school and and for it to have a true identity. And for that to happen, one of the major elements of that is to have an administrative presence up there that is dedicated to that school and for that school. So if you look at the total picture and look at the cuts that have been made, not only have we eliminated a part time assistant, a a part of a, half of a, an assistant principal, which is gonna bring uh the the full time assistant principal into working in both schools. You've also taken, not you, we have also um taken the major tools that we use, our in school suspension person, and quite honestly, if you look at that tech position, if he's not there, I have to do it because I'm the only one in the building that has the knowledge to do it. That's what I'm gonna be doing all day long. So couple that with the increase and of uh supervisory and evaluation responsibilities we have under the new system and taking away one of our, one of our major tools and creating a void that only I can fill, I don't know how that's gonna happen because I I know what guy's gonna be doing all the time. He's going to be dedicating all, the majority of his time to the athletic director's position. That's what happened last time and and it's.
Why do you think that?
Because there's a great demand in that area.
I mean, because you think it's. Well, that's what I'm saying, so you think that the athletic program is gonna just suck up all of his time? And it's not because he, you know.
There are a lot of districts with full time athletic directors.
Yes, there are, I agree with you there.
So we try to do it with a part time person and it's it's draining and it's one of the reasons why the person that's in that position right now isn't coming back. So it's, i- it's, it sounds like it's a nice administrative cut. I mean, we've, we've heard a lot about, you know, administrative cuts, but if you look at the percentage of cuts from the teacher end in the administrative end, I don't know. I don't, I didn't run the numbers, but I I would like to look at that number and see where that is because it might be disproportionate.
Well, with the number of, with the schools though that have the full time AD, I don't know about in a size of our school per se or the number of athletes we have.
I, it's not about athletes, it's about programs and sports that you have. It it's like our high school and our curriculum. I mean, we, it's not how many kids you have in the high school, look at, we offer what most schools offer in a small school. We have a lot of sports that we offer at Georgetown High School. So it it takes a lot to administer those.
Sure.
So it it's more than the the participants, it really is.
I do wonder, um, and I don't want to get off on a tangent about athletics, but I do wonder if there's more um duties that go to the AD that could be handled by the coaching staff? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I, no, I don't, I don't think this, um, it's totally different. I mean, the AD is responsible for putting the programs together, scheduling, transportation, game administration, um, all of the responsibilities that you have as a member of the league, um, the, you know.
Dealing with parents.
Yeah, dealing with the parents, dealing with the.
Go supervising the coaches.
Um, so the help that that individual would receive would come from the secretary?
We'd get secretarial support, but if we're gonna use this model, Carol's already spoken about it, we're gonna have to have a lot of game support because you can't, you can't expect the athletic director to to be, you know, at all of these games and um, you know, have a, an administrative responsibility during the day at school too.
Right, so speak a little bit about that because I wasn't really aware of that either, maybe the people out in the public aren't aware that at this level, an administr- an administrator has to be at every home game?
It has to be a game administrator, it doesn't have to be the athletic director.
Right.
Ideally.
But of course, you would pay someone else.
Yeah, that that's, I mean, it's gonna cost out of the athletic revolving account.
What what does a game administrator do?
Chris goes to a lot himself right now.
Yeah, what's the purpose of that?
The pr- it to to um manage the crowd, to manage the officials, make sure they're there. Uh, they're responsible for the for the playing surface, preparing the field, the gym, making sure that's all set up, all of that stuff and to make sure if something goes wrong.
Is it an MIA requirement, Peter, that you have a game administrator?
Um, I I don't know the answer to that, um, some sports there is.
Oh, really?
I I I can't answer that across the board, some sports, yes.
Okay, well, we can look at that.
Yeah, I wasn't, I personally wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Until, you know, when I took him to start a plan. So that is something that you have to think about because I know he can't be, I know, um, the current athletic director does a great job in being at most and not all the sporting events that he possibly could be at and it's, he does a good job. So, yeah, I can't imagine.
You know what, two years ago, outside of the the winter season?
Yeah.
He could go home at six o'clock, we have lights now and it's night games all over the place, so.
Be careful what you wish for, right?
That really is a strain on someone.
Right, administrator.
Thank you. It's a good question asked with the MIA.
Okay. Yeah, how can we find that out, just a verification, just Chris, yeah, Chris, we got no documentation.
Well, we can just, we can, we'll just.
Chris and Mike, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get. Okay, um, so anybody else have any questions?
Well, so if it's a requirement, we're gonna have to find a game administrator regardless of what happens with these positions, this positions here.
Well, that's why everything's sort of like in a little delicate dance, right? Because, you know, if the ISS person is there, then that that's potentially part of a, part of a solution.
A person could be a game administrator.
Right, so.
And that's already been discussed with that individual? That he's in- interested in being.
Any, anything that involved anybody on this list or anything we were thinking of, we talked about that.
What do we charge a game admin, what do we pay a game administrator? I think it's in the, I think it's like thirty four dollars or something.
Yeah, I think it's in that thirty to forty hour.
Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, oh, I don't know if it's an hour.
Yeah, no, you're right, it's. I I think it is.
I thought it was a game, but I'll I'll ask that question.
If that number, well, maybe if it's thirty, if it's thirty four a game, then that that's actually not bad because some games.
It maybe, it might be a game, but then if there's three games in a day.
Correct.
You know what I mean, because they'll have like middle school.
Well, usually they do freshman JV varsity all in one day.
Yeah.
So I'll ask that.
Okay.
So how are we going to proceed? Are we going to recommend a combination or or the thirty six thousand dollars more or less be eliminated from this proposal and then that budget will go through will be what we end up recommending to the finance and?
Yeah, you don't have to prioritize it, you just have, we just have to decide what goes into the budget.
We just have to find thirty six thousand dollars that we would not.
I almost think the discussion has made it more difficult to decide, is the thing.
How you know what we feel like when we're coming up with this?
I mean.
And we know all the difficult.
We know the parties, it's tough.
I I can tell you.
I think you guys should duke it out.
I just want to tell you, when when my input comes to the table, I always try to think, and I've always done it since I've been here, how can I do the same for less?
Yeah.
So a lot of times, it's, you know, can I do the same thing with two or three more kids in a class? And the answer usually is yes. But with some of these things, when you take it out, there isn't anybody left to support. And I don't have to tell anybody in this room that this, this isn't just about this year because we made some difficult cuts last year too. There's no meat on the bone and that's why, you know, we're all struggling here because, I mean, we're we're trying to to play solitaire here with four cards left in the deck and you keep shuffling them up, but then the ones that you want never come up because there's, they're not there anymore.
Right, well, speaking for myself, I I think the committee will agree when I say this, I don't think we mean to be insensitive and I'll speak for myself, about myself, I'm not being insensitive to any of these cuts on here. I think that you're right, we do a lot with not enough. Um, and I think we can justify every single person on the school's payroll. Um, but it is, I agree that that this must be the hardest part of your jobs and now it seems to be the hardest part of ours, um, just figuring out. And and a lot of times, we know who we're talking about, which I know you you all feel that it's even more difficult, but um, that is the job that we're given, so it is hard.
I think that's why, you know, we want to, we wanted to share with you sort of what went into the thought process and, you know, wanted to have everybody here tonight so that you could ask these questions so you can get a better sense of it. Um, you know, again, it depends on how much money we get from Fincom, Fincom as to how 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 deep we have to go into. We are, we all agree, everything on here is important, right? I don't think I hear anything different than that. So Pam's point is is well made, so if you, if we know what we're gonna put into the budget and we put the top three that you, two, one, two and six, we're still seventy K basically away from your two hundred and three number. So again, everything else is, we can prioritize and move things around and move them down, but we gotta find the amount of money that's gonna fit in the budget.
Right.
So that Joan can put it in the right lines and then, again, we'll determine, once we hear from Fincom, if further discussion needs to be made.
So, I mean, I agree with everything you all have said and I I really don't want to be insensitive and I don't want to make any of these cuts, but just to move the decision making process along, what do people think, and I don't know if I should make an actual movement or, um, you know, what do people think about uh eliminating or not, not restoring number seven?
That's where I am.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
What do you think, Barbie? Okay, we, so you got, so you got two, you got two that you have to, you have seventy, you gotta have something else.
Why do we have to have something else?
Well, well, if I'm going with what, what, with what?
One through six.
One through six.
One through six. Hmm? Well, except you, you've moved some, so when we looked at one, two, and six.
Right, because the money was different.
It was one thirty, slightly, eight, five, six.
Well, number five.
Is that what you told me the number was? So we're trying to get to two oh three more.
But, I, I mean, it doesn't really matter what number these are, they're.
One through six in some priority order.
One through six is.
Gets us to this three thirty-four.
Gets us to, I think it's two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred, thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six.
Right, because we've eliminated seven.
Yeah.
Okay, Michael's right.
All right, so, so we're back to the discussion about.
Really, your first proposal here, I mean, it's, I don't know about you, you know.
Well.
Yeah, just in a priority order, just we moved, we, we, right.
We moved six up.
We just, we changed the priorities around, but.
Okay, so.
But I am gonna, I personally would say that five would go where three is.
Five would go where three is.
Which is now six. So you're just swapping.
So you're saying one, two, six, four.
One, two, six, four, three, five.
Okay. One, two, six, four, three, five, three, five.
It brings up the two hundred eight, two hundred thousand eight hundred ninety-six.
And then this is seven out.
I mean, this is.
I mean, this is, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where it gets you.
Six, four. I mean, this is really significant if we have to continue with, with cuts.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's where I thought you were gonna end up.
If we get this three point five percent.
Oh, then we could have ended this meeting at seven twenty-five.
That's where I thought you were gonna end up.
That's what I suggested.
You did.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you, I thought the secretary would be something.
So one, two, six, four, three, five?
One, two, six, four, three, five.
One, two, six, four, three, five.
Everything but seven.
Yes.
They get to two hundred thousand eight hundred ninety-six.
Well, there's not.
Two hundred thousand eight hundred ninety-six.
Eight hundred ninety-six, that's what I said.
Four, two thousand six hundred twenty-nine, less than the two hundred thousand eight hundred forty.
Wait a minute, whoa, say what it is again, Wes.
Two hundred thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars.
Two hundred thousand eight hundred and ninety-six.
No, we still have three thousand left.
I know.
Let's add something else.
Well, then you'll come in at a little, slightly under three point five.
Well, I don't know, it says here, the budget which includes items one through six would be a three point five one percent increase.
Okay, so you'll be at three point five.
So we still need to find some.
It'll be three thousand.
I think if you, if I know your number, priority, that's all I need to be able to put it in the budget.
Okay. So do we need to have the actual dollar amount this evening?
No.
Okay.
Uh, well, actually, you have, you have the actual dollar amount, where, where is it?
It's the one, four, two, eight, seven, five, five, three at the bottom.
I didn't know if it was in there, so.
I mean, I assume, I don't know if that actually.
Say that again, I don't like what you're saying.
My assumption, if we're keeping one to six, the budget would be fourteen, two, eighty, seven, five, fifty, three.
Yeah. I believe so.
So which is a three point five one, okay.
Yes. And then, as I said, we, we, we'll, once we put it all in, we'll get that all set up.
Which is an increase of three point five one.
Okay.
Okay, so you can make a motion on that, and we'll, we'll take it from there.
Okay.
We do have a Fin, the Fincom meeting is scheduled for the ninth.
Right, which is next Wednesday.
That's confirmed.
March ninth, that was confirmed.
Seven o'clock?
Seven?
And they meet in the second floor?
No, they meet here.
Oh, they do meet here, okay. I do wanna give everybody an update, it seems like the girls have won.
Oh, I was just trying to find out.
They were winning. They were winning, like, thirty-six to twenty-one, like.
And like right at the end of the game?
Like, like eight fifteen.
They were up eight at half, that's the last I heard.
So let's text Chris and see, he'll tell us if.
I actually text him to find out how much the game administrator is. He's very busy administering the game.
Okay. Um, okay, so.
That would be great.
Yeah, that would be great, because if they win, then they go on.
They go on.
Is it a single elimination? So if they lose.
Yeah, usually once they loo- once they lose, they're done, yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to proceed with the F Y seventeen budget with the dollar amount of fourteen million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, which is a three point five one percent increase.
So moved.
Second. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Great. Motion carries, thank you.
All right.
Um, okay, I think this will conclude the meet, the special budget meeting for F Y seventeen. We will, uh, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-one P M, and we, uh, we'll see everybody back here, um, next Wednesday. We would love it if people would tune in to the, um, Fincom meeting. Um, important dates, Saturday at, uh, at Pembroke, at, at, uh, from nine to twelve.
Nine.
There is the visioning.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Babysitting provided.
And Carol will be babysitting.
Right.
Yes, there is babysitting, um, available, which is great. And I think it would be great if anybody that has the time could make it down to Pembroke at nine o'clock. Uh, Fincom meeting on Wednesday, March ninth, and then the school committee meeting on Thursday, March tenth. So there's a lot of important dates. So again, I made the motion to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-one. Uh, do I have a?
Second.
What, do I have a so moved?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Please do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.